One P M. Remind you to turn off your mobile devices, put on vibration, please. Any additions or additions to the agenda today? Done. The motion of council, everybody accepts the agenda for Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting of council. Has circulated or amended, move by. Council withers, sent by Council Lake, all in favor? Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest? That's here from the previous meeting, said council that were held on. August the twelve, sorry, July twenty first, especially if council held in August twelve, twenty twenty five. And to be presented and we were seconded for that. Council Lake, so you're going to count balance any errors or misses and or notice. Yeah, all in favor of those motions? Thank you. Right on down to the to the council reports, a little highlights from our AMO conference. I'll let the council will start start off and just give us his overview of what his experience were. For the town of Marathon, it's such an easy attended.
Yeah, thank you. Merdumis, yeah, it was a very positive. Trip to AMO in Ottawa. Got to attend a couple of good sessions as part of the conference. Got to see Premier Ford speak, kind of disappointed that he didn't have anything. Positive to say than regards to some of the projects we're working on and funding we're looking looking. At doing went to one good session about. Affordable housing and its impact on retail workers, tourism workers. People in those sectors, how in bigger cities do you find a real challenge with people making? Minimum wage and finding houses for those people, we're not really in that situation yet, but that could be something. In the future, that could really impact us with the rising house prices. We've had a good meeting, lots of good meetings. One highlight was for me was meeting Minister Lumston with the Ministry of Sport. Very positive meeting, his staff. Were familiar with our project, knew the numbers. And he was really positive to talk to about the impact sport has on our communities. And really kind of a believer in our project. So hopefully that will gain us some traction going forward. And just seeing that there is people in government that realize the impact that recreation has on communities like Marathon. So, yeah, that was kind of my my highlight from that. That AMO trip, great.
Thanks, we had an opportunity, obviously, and the municipality point to go down. And there's many different sessions within the conference itself, and I know council will and CEO Scorchinsky attended the various things they did in Iya as well. And, you know, listening to the premier talk and the AMO president and various things. Went to a couple of sessions, opportunity just to mingle with people and discuss so many important things with municipal. But also the biggest reason we're there is for the municipalities, meetings with ministers. We had an opportunity to meet with Minister Perry in regards to the Prince of Harbour Authority and working with BN, talking about the various opportunities with that. And also the application process for Northern Ontario Heritage Fund to discuss the effect that it might have for us. With the application to get that port up and running and partnership with BN. And of course, the waterfront development master plan, we discussed that with the minister, talking about the various. Opportunities to redevelop a brownfield and the key is it's a brownfield and that site has been vacant for. Pretty well over a decade now after the milk closed two thousand nine, clean up three years. So we're talking, you know, thirteen years of actual sitting there. So the Brownfield Real Development with the Waterfront Master Plan was very keen and the minister was very. Obviously, you know, understanding and supportive, actually, of the plan and tools to continue working with the Heritage Fund people. And our CEO, Mr. Scorchinsky identified that we're in a great relationship with the key people behind the scenes. The minister is the chair of the Heritage Fund, but people who really make things happen, so Mr. Perry was supportive of that. I didn't have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Lumston, Councilor Wheeler and CEO Scorchinsky went over. Because we had a last minute opportunity to be with the federal minister, Minister Robertson, Gregor Robertson. Federal Minister for Infrastructure, he was there doing a presentation at the AMO. So it was a kind of off the wall meeting and so we, the ties are conflicting. But it was great that that we split up and we had the opportunity to speak to two ministers of infrastructure around funding and. Mister Robertson was very keen on the project and where we we we, listen, we haven't got a no, we haven't got a yes, but they fully understand the projects. There's funding coming out federally and provincially this fall for various projects and opportunities that we know the federal government's budget is going to be announced. This fall as well, so the the idea is continues to sell in the story and the importance of the recreation facility, the ALC. For not only our community, but the region and identify clearly about the relationship we have with First Nations neighbors. And health and well being of our of our residents as well. And we talked about all the different funding opportunities within that and CEO Scorchinsky, I'm sure will highlight some of those as as our administrative portion going forward. We also had an opportunity to meet with Deputy Parliamentary Assistant of Energy and Mines, Minister Letche was overwhelmingly booked his schedule, so. Been an opportunity to meet with Chris Scott, utilizing mining taxation to build community infrastructure was one of our key aspects, meeting with with the deputy minister. Talking about how we can relocate and have the community benefit agreements and a sort of having mining taxation. And we do get some sort of that right now, which is called the North Funding, Northern Ontario, Northern, Northern Ontario Resource Development Funds. So our north's funding is about a hundred and ten thousand a year. We had a great meeting with the minister's office, Minister Prairie's office, through Noma. Talked about that sustaining that fund, there's a hundred forty four municipalities, I get it. We want to continue the fifteen million dollar fund, but also have that increase and then also have an opportunity to have a secondary. Special application for resource based communities over and above that fund, so example, Marathon is a resource community. We would be able to apply maybe for additional funding over and above the fifteen million allocation, so very keen on that, they like the idea. So that was a good opportunity for us as a municipality. So great meetings, I'll let CEO Scorchinsky highlight that, you have anything from municipality, you want to go get to Nomas.
Sure, yeah, the other topic that we discussed and submitted a position for with respect to. PA Scott was our natural gas project. So the province is currently looking at the potential of phase three funding program. Per natural gas with a specific focus on non pipeline projects, which of course ours would be. So that was well received, we presented that. I had the opportunity, as I always do, I hosted our regional C, our CAOs from Northwestern Ontario at a dinner. It's a good chance for us to get together and talk about some of the like issues that we we face. And really, two things kind of stood out this year through our discussions. You know, one is, you know, the aging facilities in our communities, not just Marathon. Even across the Northwest, very few new builds in recent years. And we're all facing, you know, that challenge of finding infrastructure funding. And we heard that loud and clear from all of our meetings, as well as the premier. People, you know, in communities are looking for not just millions, billions. To replace this infrastructure, you know, and if we don't get it, what do we do? So that was a very common topic, you know, that we debated for quite some time. And then the other one, which, you know, isn't a surprise, but attracting and retaining qualified skilled staff. Especially at the senior level, you know, whether it be CAO or senior leadership level. What we're seeing is there's less and less people looking to do these types of jobs. And a lot of it has to do with the frustrations and the backlash of social media. And really just an instability with respect to those positions. You know, I'm I'm the veteran of the group. You know, eleven plus years experience as a CAO, and there's lots of new young ones. But they're not, they're not lasting because of the pace of the job. And just in with frustrations of some of the criticism. So I think that's going to be a real challenge going forward for our small municipalities is to, you know, find that qualified staff to. Do projects like tiny homes like the Active Living Centre. You know, that take, they take a lot of work and a lot of brain power, and if you don't have that, then it becomes a real challenge, so. Always good to get together with colleagues, but certainly isn't getting any easier each year we go to these conferences.
Yeah, very did of that, I mean. As we heard from the premier and I've had many conversations with them directly, that there's four hundred forty four municipalities in Ontario. And everybody wants money and, you know, fully appreciate it, but, you know, he he relates back that we can only do so much for so many communities. But we have to go back to our ratepayers, well, some of us just don't have that ability to borrow, and as mentioned, I think we've made clear to both provincial and federal governments. We would borrow the money if we had the ability, but we don't have the ability to borrow beyond that threshold. No different than any one of us went to the bank and saying, I want to borrow X amount of dollars per house, but they say, yeah, you could borrow to buy that. Two hundred thousand dollars, you can't buy that five hundred thousand dollars. Well, we're in the same situation, so municipalities with bigger industrial and commercial tax bases can obviously borrow more money, we just don't go at it, so. We need to have everything come together and listen, we're we're making great headways, we need to keep moving forward with the real ideas, we just need the government to come back and say. As I met with CEO Scorchinsky this morning, signing the documents, saying you got the money, yes, there, that'd be awesome, but that's not happened yet, so we'll continue to plug away. On behalf of Noma, as President Noma, it's my first year as the president, had the opportunity to meet with three different ministers, but on various different topics, we talked about everything. We had parliamentary assistant meetings as well. Key thing with Noma is talking about their their strategic plan going forward, obviously. And talking about access to skilled labor, strengthening post secondary education, northern highways, safety of our highways. And just quickly, when I got home one Wednesday, late Wednesday, obviously, we had the incident outside of our community at the at the Canadian lookout area. And there was a twelve hour closure of the highway, so I drove with home real quick, reached out to the minister's office in clarity. This is what we just talked about on Tuesday morning in Ottawa, the various things that stressed out cash, we also sent a letter off to the Prime Minister. And as you could see in the announcement, they're talking about infrastructure, critical infrastructure, so we're hoping. Are those discussions and the impacts we're having, not only the closures, but the deaths on our highways. But the economic impact for closures of highways is huge. And, you know, talking about the provincial municipal fiscal framework and engaging in government. Economic development for the twenty five thirty five plan that Nomas presented to government. Talked about how we continue to focus on immigration, immigration is really important, not only to. The Marathon, but all thirty seven municipalities represent Noma catchment. And we're all finding that with the RNE programs, the monitoring, the discussions, we're working with the colleges to talk about opportunities. The president of college, Michelle Sebel came with us and met with us, with the college universities to talk about those. Met with Minister Patini with Labor, talking about how that looks, how does that look with the the impact of training individuals, not just for the skilled positions we need in our communities. That we know we can attract immigration on, is the service sector, because we all know the service sector is one of services. The people in the restaurants, gas bars, corner stores, we don't have that. We don't have any, as we heard from the opposition recently, we pushed back on that. We met with the FPU from Karran River, Noma, around, you can't swipe the brush across the board with one swipe and say everybody's in the same boat. So the prime minister has identified that he's going to look at the foreign worker program. Identify rural and northern communities maybe address that differently, no different than the RNE programs and all the different, there's, listen, there's a ton of them out there for immigration. And support, but northern rural small communities don't have overfunds of students willing to work in our service sector industries. Maybe in the urban centers, there are some some issues around student employment, but it's it's bigger than we can imagine, it's not just because there's immigrants. Taking jobs that our students are not getting in urban centers, but rural centers is not happening. Key policy around the transition was key, we talked to the minister in length, they are talking about the two for one, as you remember, we talked about that in the past. There is a section of twenty eight kilometers of South Bay that will probably start potentially in the spring of twenty five, twenty six, that's twenty eight kilometers though. So this was announced three years ago, so this is, we said to government, you gotta, gotta speed the process up a little bit quicker, so through the environmental process design, only twenty eight kilometers. You can imagine our discussion, that doesn't really make sense, you gotta go forward and really, really plug it away, right? So some of the key things we, those three ministers, but also the commitment that we ask for government, simply as we did in the past. If you can't do anything, tell us, then we can move on, or we can figure out some other solution around that. And we need to make, you know, champion the northern, make make northern Ontario, fighting for northern Ontario, that's our role as Noma. We work really closely with Phenom, myself and President Danny Whelan, presented at luncheon on Monday afternoon. To northern people, obviously, so they get it. But just talking about how we all have to work together and and voice the concerns of the north and of course, Phenom represents a hundred and ten municipalities. Noma represents thirty seven, so between the two of us, we're at a hundred and forty seven municipalities, that's huge in Ontario out of the four hundred forty four that we represent. So we just got to make sure that the people in the south, we understand the population difference, there is a lot of pressures on on the south in regards to moving people around. And how do you address that? But Noma, I think, really gives some good presentations, the government was really pleased with the booklet. And we had a lot of traction with ministers and deputy ministers on the issues, but again, we're hoping to get. Some letters back, which we do as municipalities as well, but in a positive form rather than just thank you for meeting with us and it was great. So we always try to bring solutions, no different than municipality. And I'm glad I was there, I represented the Noma, but I'm also there more importantly for the municipality of town of Marathon. And we had great success, we just need those commitments, letters. That'd be awesome, but honestly, between administration and council to the public, we've been working very, very, very hard behind the scenes on this project. And it's not for lack of trying, we just have to get everything coming together in a positive manner. Okay, any questions on any of that? All good, thank you very much, Council Lake, just wanted to highlight a bit about the council, council, council program.
Yeah, so we're starting the school year over at the high school and every, for the last ten years, we've had student counselors come and sit. For the year at this table. Last year was the first year that administration kind of informally sent someone over to do interviews with the students and help make the decision about. Who was going to build these two chairs, so it's just hoping to formally sort of ask administration to send somebody. To help do those interviews and then select the student, two student counselors and then. Think again, meaningfully, we've done some neat projects over the years, we did. Land claim policy a few years ago, we've done presentations to Noma or to. To Noma over the last few years. Counselor Anthony was really involved in running stuff in the community and schools, so looking to see what we might want from this table in terms of a project. This year from our student council, so just looking to formalize that process and if administration would send somebody.
Yeah, first and.
Any question? Yeah, we started the program, actually, Council.
No, I just want to know, is it only open to students of Superior Greenstone or can students from Itas Segona also if they're interested? Uh, for the import?
That's a great question. I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't see why not, right, that's still a student, and that's certainly something we should probably, so I haven't, I haven't been in contact with. It's in Superior, but I can, yeah, that's a good, that's great.
So either you, Council Lake, or the administration can send a quick note over saying if there's any students in any timeline that you're looking for the interview process? Which I assume is going to be quickly.
Yeah, we're trying to.
We're in September, we'd like to get them on board in October.
Yeah.
So that's we gave it for the.
January the first meeting.
First meeting in October.
It's been thirteen years this program's running.
It's hard to believe it.
I know, we're getting old, that's why I'm going to fly and go by quickly, but it's been thirteen years. And we talked about two thousand, I started two thousand twelve. Okay, great, seal report, report on the Active Living Centre, Mr. Scorchinsky.
It's very brief and it's certainly not an announcement that we have the money in the bank. But I did just want to advise council and the public, we have been able to extend the tender that we have negotiated. With the preferred bidder by another thirty days, so that takes us to the end of September. So this will be our second extension. You know, that's not going to carry on in perpetuity, but we still have a valid tender until the end of September as we continue to work through these pathways to to find funding, so. Just wanted to provide that update, that that is in place and has been mutually agreed upon, so does buy us at least another month. To continue to pound the pavement and try and find the money to build the project.
Yeah, is there any other questions, Mr. Scorchinsky? Man, oh man, I wish we had the ability to borrow, we've borrowed more than, but we still have that, so. Okay, thank you for that update, and then we'll continue plugging away. You're going to do the presentation on the Marathon nonprofit housing.
Yeah, is that one? So at its December seventh, twenty twenty one, regular meeting, council supported the development of the housing initiative. Proposed by the Marathon Municipal Not-for-Profit Housing Corporation. In collaboration with the CGV Group on Chisholm Trail by contributing approximately four hundred thousand dollars to the project through the donation of two undeveloped. Multi residential zone properties on Chisholm Trail, waiving of site plan controls, development charges and building permit fees. And the donation of management planning and works water administration costs. Council also recognized that there may be a potential need to support a tax break for this project. And directed administration to research funding models and tax regimes, tax regimes to support this need. On August twenty first, twenty twenty five, administration received a request from the Not-for-Profit Housing Corporation. To support a graduated tax break program to ensure the financial viability of the housing facility and overall affordability. The requested tax break configuration is laid out over a thirteen year program. It starts with year one at a hundred percent and eventually in year thirteen is zero and full amount of tax paid. Administration has not yet had the opportunity to calculate the dollar amount these tax breaks would amount to in total, this would be completed should council. Support this request in principle. Your administration presents this report for council's information and further direction.
Great, thanks for that, I do have a motion here that council, you buy, except the attachment regarding rent and not profit housing, which is actually proposed for the administration to direct its research funding laws and tax regents to change and support. As this request has been further report back to council in October, move by. That's like saying, but, yeah, questions, that's like.
So, do we, I mean, there are other examples of. Housing, sport housing in Marathon, do we offer tax breaks to those structures as well? This would be a new.
There's, there's no recent examples where we've offered a tax break to any facility.
That's okay, that's my understanding.
So I would encourage administration to to investigate, but I I believe that we tried this way back, I thought way back, was supporting the seniors in our community for reduction in water bill. We were told very quickly and swiftly by the legislature, you cannot bonus any specific group in your municipality. We had to remove the relief of water, which was only a, I think, thirty or forty percent discount on where the average homeowner. So I'm wondering if that's still the law in regards to tax, but at the same time, I know they they built this with the anticipation, maybe having discussions around that. This municipality and the council or administration did not promise or support in any regards to production of taxation, they needed to to have discussions around how the affordability was there. But we got to be very gentle in how we consider this, I I don't even believe we should be considering it honestly, because at the end of the day. This could have huge impacts, we do waive the U, the Legion's taxes. Because Legion is recognized by Canada and Ontario as a service club facility to to remember and support the service members in our country. So that's across the board, Legion across the board get tax relief of zero taxation. Other than that, churches, institutions, schools, that's all spelled out by legislation. I don't think we can even do this, but that'll ask administration definitely inquire. As you say, the community collective doesn't, it has a waiver as well.
I, my question was just what year are we? Are they stuck, I guess, year one, two thousand twenty five, or is year one, like this place has been operating? Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good question and it's, you know, while, you know, we've written the resolution that we have, which we got to do some research. Okay, you know, this, you know, you know, it was discussed in twenty twenty one, as as the mayor indicated. There was never any guarantee that we would give a tax break, and now it's resurfaced four years later, so. If council does want to consider it, what we're saying is we'll bring a further report back with with, you know, different information types. As well as what those numbers look like. You know, talk about in my head, I'm not sure if we're actually able to do this under the municipal act, that would be some of the research we would have to complete.
And and again, none of the other portable housing units have requested this in the past, nor do we offer any other apartment style buildings.
So we did similar type of contributions to the average of housing on the file with the law and sending the waiver of current building permits. As a contribution to get the facility that we built the housing in our community that we needed. That was our contribution, as you can see clearly, to enough of four hundred thousand dollars to the contribution to nonprofit. So we won't get into that, but there was contribution there as well, but no tax wait.
And there's no tax relief on that, you're building down middle of the, okay?
No.
Okay.
So, so is council comfortable at least getting administration to investigate what the rules are around the tax fee, but I I personally don't believe, my opinion, we should be. Or entering into any type of tax fees for that type of facility or any of those facilities in regards to housing.
I believe that we require in order to run our municipality.
The the other thing in the investigation, I'd be interested to know. Because they're offering ranking gear income, said that there's additional funding available through. DSA.
So that that facility specifically is is, there is some subsidies, but the rent is set at. X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
So if you do qualify, the the DSA will cover the nonprofits, difference is not like RGI where this this facility is across the road. At Abrams, at Wildwood, the rents are rent gear income based on your ability to pay. So you might pay two twenty five, you may might pay eight hundred dollars, this one is fourteen hundred dollars or thirteen hundred dollars. But the subsidy then comes in from DSA to subsidize that one or two or three or five units separately than a program.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, what I'm wondering is, is if there's, like, housing is the biggest block of money they have, they're working with right now. And if there's some way that they can negotiate with them about paying your taxes rather than us, that's.
Certainly, will that be very simply, we come back and say, no, you must pay your taxes, so they'll figure that out with DSA and nonprofit housing, Council Lake.
And, I mean, the obvious thing would be somebody who's paying that tax, and if it's not the folks in that building, then it's going to be every other ratepayer.
Yeah.
That would be my my argument against equity there.
So we're comfortable to admit to direct administration to bring more information for the October meeting, so at least we know the rules. We can make a final decision at that meeting, because right now, as whatever's happening. The bill is adding up and the interest is adding up on that bill for the nonprofit housing, so as soon as they get there figured. What they're going to hold to this fact, we don't agree to this resolution, the less interest they're going to pay on their tax bill. It's it's accumulating as we speak. So we'll, we'll have a decision made.
Just one thing.
We can't hear, we can't hear from the public point of view, sir. You can step up to the chair, thanks.
Just one thing, the terms we'll be using is bonusing. When we donated land and we donated something, we could have looked at it as part of getting much needed housing, but now. Housing is built, so it'll be a lot more difficult to get that by without saying you're bonusing this one property instead of every other property owner.
Fair, but I I think we just need to follow legislation clearly, and if legislation says pretty careful, say specifically for anything in regards to taxation. Other than the ones that are spelled out already in legislation, that'll be good. Okay, so that's fair, we'll ask administration to come back to the final report, I'll go, we'll make a decision then. Good, okay, thank you for that, so in this motion, I will be, we'll deal with it as the mover and second to Council Lake, second to Council, and then we'll bring it back in October. To have fuller further information, all in favor, very, thank you. Report on the waterfront master plan engagement and results, Mr. Scorchinsky, please.
Mr. Watson, that was one.
Oh, sorry.
First one.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the development of the waterfront master plan, the town of Marathon conducted community engagement to better understand residents' priorities and aspirations for the waterfront area. Visual displays along with a survey were made available during the Canada Day celebration at Penlake Park and online following the event. In total, sixty eight responses were received, providing a strong sample of community perspective. The feedback received was thoughtful and wide ranging, with residents expressing pure enthusiasm for creating a revitalized multi use waterfront that reflects Marathon's identity. While providing new opportunities for recreation, tourism and community gathering. Key themes from the survey included, arena development, a majority of respondents supported building a new marina at the south end of the site. Identifying its potential to expand both tourism and local use. Others highlighted interest in expanding the northern boat launch area, showing that there's a strong community support for marina development overall. The pump house redevelopment, residents were particularly excited about opportunities to adaptively reuse the historic pump house. The most supported ideas included food and beverage services, a museum or archives, cultural and art programming and recreational space. Program elements and amenities, expanding and connecting a waterfront trail network emerged as a top priority. Improving beach access was strongly supported, residents consistently emphasized the importance on family friendly amenities such as playgrounds, flashpads and picnic areas. There were also strong interest in flexible spaces such as festival lawns and multipurpose gathering areas, along with lookouts and food and beverage opportunities. Many respondents encouraged incorporating indigenous and industrial heritage features to reflect Marathon's history. Top priorities and five year focus, when asked to identify the highest priority elements. Trails, beach access, playgrounds and pump house redevelopment were the most frequently selected. In terms of what should be prioritized over the next five years, respondents most commonly highlighted. The the development of a pool or major recreation facility, expansion of trail and beach access and advancing marina redevelopment. Overall, the results demonstrate strong support for a waterfront that balances recreation, culture, tourism and heritage, creating a destination that benefits both residents and visitors. There is no direct financial impact at this stage, financial considerations will be presented to council as part of future project planning and implementation. Your administration presents this report for council's information only.
Great, thank you very much for that update report, anybody have any questions? That's what.
Yeah, I think, thanks for the report, I think. I think, when I think about what that place can look like, it really is above the ALC anchoring so much of that. Like you look at the site plan for that, it kind of naturally leads in to what we're doing. So I think, we talked about the CEO of Scorchinsky's update. Okay, I know how much work is going into it and the public, public doesn't see the number of folks together, the number of meetings you've had, but that, that anchors everything, right? So I just, again, I encourage you to keep doing the work you're doing and talk about frustrations of being a CEO. One of them is not hearing back from government. And I think once, once that's done, everything else goes from there. So I appreciate that some of the heritage stuff that's in there, I think would be wonderful. It'd be nice to have that waterfront back for the municipality, but really it's getting that ALC down there to anchor everything, right?
Yeah, for sure. Anybody else? No, it's so funny, we look at the middle of 2009, the demolition took place over the next three years, so we're talking 212. So, you know, when you think about 12, 13 years of, of working behind the scenes on this project, with, you know, master plan development, ALC development, planning, moving and relocation, public consultations, it all seems to go by and you still get criticized for like, there's no opportunity to have input. And I mean, it's been going on for 13 years, so there's been multiple times where input and opportunities. And obviously with the, you know, the announcement of Jumpstart program and combining with the spelling ALC, all those wonderful things and everything is leaning towards the redevelopment of that waterfront, no different in our discussions as CEO Scorchinsky and myself sit on the board of directors for the Port Authority. It's a great organization. We're moving forward, we're getting funding, we made announcements, but instead getting that up and running, once that's up and running, dividends can come back and we develop the whole port, the whole landscape of the ALC area, the waterfront master plan will be redeveloped. You can put the money back in for the investments of that, but it all has to come together. We say government works well. It's not a criticism of anything or anybody, it's just the reality is working with government. And this is not just one specific government, this is multiple governments over the years. It's very frustrating because just the wheel does turn slow and yet we're still plugging away. So thank you for that report, but hopefully we can put all those plans into place over the next year or two that everything is, the shoulders are in the ground and we're doing things down there. Anything else? Thanks. Motion here for check runs. Again, a motion to approve check runs for accounts payable in the amount of $1,161,085.08 and payable in the amount of $326,871.06. Move by. Second by Counselor, first, move by Counselor Valance and by Counselor Julia. Any questions on those check runs? Harry, none? Call question on favor. Harry, thank you very much. I have a motion here in regards to the upcoming Franco-Ontario celebration. As you know, Franco-Ontario flag and Golden Anniversary Celebration in Town Hall this year is in regards to the 25th of, sorry, legislative April 26, 2010, as David declares, September 25th, each year recognizes Franco-Ontario Day throughout, throughout Ontario, where September 25th is the anniversary of the first rising of the Franco-Ontario flag and it represents over 400 years of French presence in Ontario. And whereas there is more than 745,000 Franco-Ontarians, the largest Franco-Ontario community outside of Quebec, where Franco-Ontario Day has become an annual or occasional celebrate the Franco-Ontario community. Therefore, be resolved that I, Mayor Rick Dumas, by virtue of the power vested in me as Mayor of the town of Marathon, hereby proclaim September 25th as Franco-Ontario Day and join the Franco-Ontario community in celebrating its exceptional contribution to Ontario's growth and prosperity. Move by. Counselor Lake, second by Counselor Valance. Any questions on that? Once again, I will not be in attendance. I will not be in Toronto. Our board meetings always fall, I've got an MOU meeting with the government of Ontario, so I have to go back and plug those arguments with that. It's just one of those, I'm assuming my couple of counselors and deputy mayor will be in attendance to, to help raise the flags if possible. Thank you very much.
Well, let them know that Mayor is mine.
I'll bring my calendar here.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.